My, my thing is not sure.
Is that correct?
Yes, we do. The only one we're waiting for is Roy, who's having some technical difficulties.
Okay. All righty, and we're expecting presentations by Karen Paulus from Colorado Springs Park and Rec, and also, I believe, Kurt Schroeder.
Yeah, I know, I've seen Karen on here. Do you want me to go ahead and bring them both over, or do you want to wait till?
Let's, let's let Roy get in place first, and then we'll go ahead and bring them in.
Very good, thank you.
See Roy's present now?
Sorry.
Glad you made it on, Roy.
Okay, and it looks like Denise doesn't have her video on. I believe Counselor Woolbrook is on her way back from Denver, so she's talking to us by phone, I believe, or listening by phone.
Okay.
Okay, we see Denise is there, okay, good. All right, well, let's, we'll go ahead and get started, then I'll call this mailwork session meeting, Council for June 11th, 2020, to order. The city clerk could go ahead and call the roll, please.
Yes. Counselors Judith Chandler.
Present.
Dee Brimner.
Here.
John Shada.
Here.
Susan Woolbrook.
Here.
Lily Wolf.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nancy Fortune. And Mayor John Graham.
Here.
We have all.
Thank you.
You attended.
Okay, good. Tonight, of course, we have one discussion item, that's the the incline management plan during the COVID-19 virus and related concerns. I think tonight, what we want to do really, I think, as you all know, as we all acknowledge, this is primarily an opportunity for Colorado Springs, essentially Colorado Springs Park and Rec Department, to present their, their issues regarding this. We did make our presentation, our staff made the presentation, May the 26th, which council supported unanimously, gave direction to, to city staff to go ahead and pursue it. Since then, we found out that City, City of Colorado Springs Parks Department had some concerns about it, so tonight, the focus is to give them a chance to put their ideas forward, and we can discuss this a bit. I think since, I believe it's anticipated that we'll want to meet and discuss this potentially in an executive session, I think council members should sort of, your participation should be guided by the idea that we'll, we'll want to meet and discuss this amongst ourselves as well. So I think to have clarifying questions and have a good understanding of Colorado Springs' position, to understand the areas where we may not agree, it would be useful to have that, but I think we should try and leave emotions out of this, and with, with the thought that we'll have the opportunity to, to discuss it further in greater detail. So with that said, City Clerk Judy Morgan, if you would bring in the first presenter, I don't know if that's going to be Karen or Kurt.
I can bring them both over, if that works.
That would be great. Welcome to TV Land, welcome to Manitou. Hi. Okay, Karen, Kurt, thank you for joining us tonight. We were really quite interested in hearing what you have to say. Currently, you're both muted, so who would like to start? If you could raise your hand and unmute your microphone. Okay, Karen, you want to go ahead and start?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Graham, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Fortune, and Honorable Members of City Council. I am Karen Palace, I'm the Parks Recreation and Cultural Services Director for the City of Colorado Springs, and I want to first and foremost, thank you all for putting together this special meeting. I know these are not easy, and this is our third council meeting this week as well, and so I just want to thank you for your time and being willing to host this at a separate time in lieu of your regular meetings. So what I'd like to do this evening is just kind of walk you through the information. As one of the three owners of the incline, and all, and the properties and such and around there, we wanted to share with you our proposal based on the conversations and continued follow-up we've had with your team in Manitou. I want to thank Denise and Roy and Dole. We put a lot of time and effort into working through some things over this last couple of weeks, and I appreciate that time and, and that attention to what we have to share this evening. So I want to be very clear upfront, we are very interested in requesting that the City of Manitou consider at their next regular meeting, if you all would consider, removing the Manitou incline from your emergency declaration of March 17th. And so that's what we are proposing and requesting from you all, and then we'll share with you kind of what we heard from the emergency declaration, and then how we would like to move forward with your support in that effort. So if there aren't any questions upfront, be happy to walk through that. I'm going to be the primary presenter, and then Kurt's my, my, going to come in with any stats and info that we might need, and in the additional dialogue.
Any questions at this point, council? I think not. Karen, why don't you go ahead and get started?
Okay. Does, Roy, do you have the PowerPoint, or am I going to share my screen?
I actually have it as well, but if you'd like to go ahead and share a screen, that's, that's fine as well.
Okay, let me see if I can, let me do that. No, it's not giving me that option. So Judy, if you can go ahead and share, and then I can let you know when we are ready to move through, if that'll work. Thank you, Judy, appreciate that. Sorry, that wasn't working on my end, we've had some technical difficulties over here today with some firewall issues, so thank you. All right, as I mentioned, we are here to request the opportunity to reopen the incline under our COVID-19, and we are following in line with what's considered the public health order, and the current one that is safer at home and in the vast gray outdoors. And what I want to share with you all, going back, hang on, oh, you got it, Judy? But I wanted to go back to, just to be clear, what we're addressing based on what was identified related to COVID, and why the incline was closed. In item number six, from the March 17th, you all stated that the concern about Manitou incline being an attractive nuisance and a health hazard, and then you provided information around attendance and visitors as an issue. So again, concerns for the number of users, understood. You also mentioned concern regarding the free shuttle buses, and that they were often packed to capacity during transit from parking areas, so that was number two. And then the third item that you identified was use of the incline was around restroom facilities, and so I'll address those three issues as they were identified as part of the closure due to COVID. And so that's what we're prepared to share with you this evening. Go ahead, Judy, to the first slide. All right, I'm going to address the health and safety issues first. I think council heard quite a bit of this already from your team in Manitou, and appreciate Roy and, and Dole and Kurt working through a lot of that information previously. So you have restrooms, it was deemed at your last meeting that there's a sufficient number of facilities. We offered to up the maintenance to six times a week, and we'll continue to monitor those facilities as we have done in the past, and as we continue to do at many of our locations across the City of Colorado Springs. And then we have also identified some additional handwashing stations to be added to that area, so that will allow for sufficient restroom area at the base of the incline at this time. We will also follow all El Paso County health guidelines, which is what we've been doing since the pandemic started. We have been working very closely with our health department through all of the closures, openings, and such throughout all of the parks facilities here in Colorado Springs, as well as our properties that are outside of our jurisdiction. That particular guideline right now is, again, staying home if you're sick. You know, we've encouraged that, we've done a lot of videos and information around that, maintaining that physical, a physical distance of six feet, and we changed our signage from social distancing to physical distancing, so folks really started to understand what that meant. But again, if you're with your family now, and now you can do under 10, right, is the latest rules can be together, but we're encouraging those folks still to maintain a physical distance of six feet, and we are encouraging masks. This is the one thing that we did hear back from some of the folks in the community, is they were worried that we were going to require masks to go up the incline, and we said absolutely not, the incline is challenging enough, but we do encourage them to have those masks as you're going down, because the bar trail is very narrow, and we want to make sure folks are protecting themselves, just as we are encouraging them to do so in all of our other hundreds and hundreds of miles of trails throughout our park system. And then, last but not least, on the guidelines, we've done this from the beginning, but we've encouraged folks to bring their own water, that there is not water, drinking water available, so please bring your own water, and also bring your own hand sanitizer, and we've seen great compliance in and around that, especially with a lot of our folks around playgrounds and things that they're now open. And then the last item on here that's related to the comments regarding the shuttle, and the shuttle being full or over capacity, and so we've stated that the shuttle protocol, based on our conversations with our transit department, is they would follow a consistent current transit requirements that they have. However, we did explore with them, and I think Roy talked to Brian Vitulie in transit as well, and they were willing to modify if need be any protocols that Manitou felt comfortable with, since the shuttle currently has the contract with you all directly. So that is open for interpretation in terms of what you all feel comfortable with, if you, when you bring the shuttles back, and I know there's been some dialogue about that, and I'm hoping to hear a little bit of that maybe at the end of this tonight, because I think folks are going to want to know what the status of that transportation may be. So those are the things related to the health and safety. Judy, if we could go to the next slide? It's not forwarding. Don't you love tech? It's been so much fun to do all these things for Zoom.
I'm not sure why it's, it's not, let me just, there we go.
There you go. So the next, thank you, Judy, appreciate that. The next area falls under operational modifications, and so we wanted to offer up after, again, additional conversations with the City of Manitou team in terms of how do we fall in line with guidelines or outline, outlined by the public health order? And again, that is the one identified under safer at home and in the vast gray outdoors. Our governor has been very outspoken about being outside is the best place to be during COVID-19, and we've seen that in a lot of our facilities, and folks are really starting to explore. There is currently, and there has not been any limitations on this order, or any of the previous order, as it relates to trails, so that's the good news. But we have followed up with and verified with our El Paso County Health Department, and they are comfortable what we, what we have provided for you all tonight, and again, encouraging all of us following the rules identified and outlined by El Paso County Health. So again, from the state, you have those rules and procedures, and again, reinforcing what's happening locally, and that has been our compliance factor. We've worked very closely with all of our facilities, not just the ones that are open, but the ones that are closed, working very closely with El Paso County Health, to make sure we are modifying any operational plans that they require, that we're meeting those standards, and that we're moving forward in a very safe and healthy direction in terms of making sure our community stays safe and is protected from the COVID-19, and we would like the same for Manitou. I understand it was very concerning, a small community, I know not only your concerns, but then seeing what was happening in some of the mountain towns as well, very concerned with visitors, so I understand and respect that, and I think we've got a way to move forward that aligns with some of the things that were presented to you previously, and things that we can handle as the owner of the property. The next area was a reservation system for incliners. My concern at the last presentation is that my understanding was around parking and parking purviews, and so we've had a lot of dialogue with that between the City of Colorado Springs staff and the City of Manitou staff over the last few weeks. And so we host different programs and activities throughout our system. This is not new to us, this is what we do. We've got North and South Slope up on a similar system already with Pike's Peak, America's Mountain, one of our properties that we operate under a special use permit. We run hundreds and hundreds of programs across the, the City of Colorado Springs, and so we are proposing that we do an interim reservation system during this time of COVID, and it would be hosted on our City of Colorado Springs incline page. That's where we'll host all of that information and reservation capabilities on that. The initial proposal aligns with what City of Manitou staff had recommended, we were willing to work with that, thought that was a very fair and reasonable start, and to work through those participants, it was 45 participants at a 30-minute increment, so we're happy to identify that and work with that. We are proposing that the timing right now be 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM for staffing purposes, and that wristbands will be issued, and so I've got one on, we do these every day, but for our folks as they're coming into the building, but we would be issuing wristbands, we'll be capturing names and information and such, and so that would be the interim reservation plan, as is proposed with those initial 45 participants, and then as we evaluate, as we see how things are working, and understanding how folks are following those policies and such, we'll work with, we're happy to work with your team and talk through what's happening there and giving some feedback. So Judy, if you go to page four, next one? Additional operational modifications enforcement, we contract typically with El Paso County Sheriff's Office, and so they have been very helpful to us in the past in terms of a lot of the reinforcement of rules and procedures, and this would be no different. And then we've identified some incline attendance during the COVID-19 that would help administer the program, have, help capture information that we're looking for in some data. One of the key parts of this proposal, and one that the Health Department has been very supportive of in terms of contact tracing, one of the things you've seen as the restaurants have been reopening, they're responsible for collecting a name and information from at least one individual per party, so that if and when, if you listen to our governor, it's more like when someone contracts the disease, that they are able to be able to communicate with those folks. And so with our reservation system in place, if we were notified that someone had been on the incline and had contracted the disease, we'd be able to let those folks know, not who, but just the fact that they may have been exposed and be able to communicate with them. That will help us as well communicate with El Paso County Health, one of our partners, in making sure that they're aware and we're following within their guidelines. Reporting was requested from your team in Manitou, and so we were happy to provide incremental updates as requested, so if you need something weekly initially, and then you need something, you know, less frequently, because you've had enough of the incline, you know, we're happy to provide that information and make that information available. All right, Judy, go on to the next one. Messaging, one of the things that we spent a lot of time with over the last two meetings that we had with your Manitou team, was how to move forward with some collaborative communications. I want to thank your communications team in Manitou for the collaborative news release that went out last night, I think that was very helpful, and was, I got a lot of positive responses from that, so I appreciate that support and that team effort. We also talked a lot about social media in our safety videos, we have a lot of safety videos we've done in terms of the incline, as well as any of our trails and trail use, and so we'd be happy to continue on with those efforts and make those available to Manitou if they so chose to utilize them. And then we spent quite a bit of time about how to provide links to City of Manitou Springs' parking areas, and how to communicate that, as well of what parking reservations and/or fees that may be applied, understand, there'll be more dialogue on that very soon, and hopefully a really soon implementation. I think that'll be great information for us to be able to share with incline users and bar users, and any of the others that are up in that particular corridor, so that the information that you all want them to see first, we can include that in terms of that reservation system, and let folks know what's available, where to park, and what's going on in the community. Go ahead to the next one, Judy. Proposal as presented, I wanted to share with you, and I had let your team know this as well. One of the things we strive for in terms of Colorado Springs is communication with our advocates and with our friends groups to make sure what's moving forward. We get good feedback from that, or if there's anything we need to be concerned with, and so we have provided this information to not only our Colorado Springs Administration, but City Council to move forward with this. We reached out to Colorado Springs Utilities and the United States Forest Service in terms of this proposal, all of which are supportive of what we have presented here, or what we're presenting to you all this evening. We also presented to our Parks Recreation Cultural Services Advisory Board this morning this information, I will say they are supportive of moving forward and opening the incline. However, several members did have caveats in the terms of this is an interim solution, and any permanent solution would go through the significant public process like we would do with the master and management plan. So there was a lot of conversation around having guardrails on what this process is as it relates to COVID, and so I assured them that I would share this information with you all, let you know what their thoughts were, but that you were supportive, and they were supportive of the proposal as it's presented. We also shared this information with the Trails and Open Space Coalition to make sure that they would align with this proposal as presented in the interim fashion, as well as incline friends. We've also spoken with Pike's Peak Outdoor Recreation Alliance around, again, their advisory board, understanding this presentation under the COVID guidelines. And then I was really pleased, I think, the collaborative communication that went out last night, and the initial proposal being shared with the community, we got very positive social media, and for those of you who monitor comments and, and things, very often, you will note that that's not always the case, and so I was really cautiously optimistic that we'd get good feedback from the community, and based on our communications folks monitoring those comments, we've gotten a lot of good positive feedback for the proposal. I will say the one concern that we did receive was concern about having to wear a mask to go up the incline, and we've assured that individual that's not what we're, that's not what we would be requiring, but we would recommend they have that mask with them, especially on the descent as it relates to bar trail, to make sure our bar folks that are coming up and those that are coming down can safely pass one another, as we've encouraged folks to do elsewhere in our park system. And the next item? There we go. So path to opening, I know you have to take this through to your regular meeting, and so we would be requesting that this be included in your June 16th meeting. I did identify a potential opening date of June 17th, so the following day, but my, my staff has encouraged me to give them a few more days, because we want to make sure we've got everything up and running and, and working, and I also wanted to, you know, a little time too, to understand if there's any minor modifications or things that we need to consider and think about, so I really appreciate the opportunity to share this with you all. And my last slide, Judy, if you'll move forward, is any questions? A beautiful picture of skyline below the incline, and I just want to thank you all, I want to thank again Dole and, and Roy and Denise for their efforts, and for working through the complexities of the incline between ownership and, you know, with multiple owners, it's a very challenging dynamic. It's also challenging to understand everybody's rules and guidelines, and, and know how those work, and what, what it takes to, to implement, and so I'm appreciative of seeing, I, I understand we're not doing the parking presentation this evening, but I was appreciative of seeing what Roy had put together, and I look forward to hearing more about that, especially as it relates around the bar lot and the shuttle, and then what your plans are around Hiawatha. I think the community is very interested in seeing some of those things move forward. I know those are outside of COVID, and I'm here only for COVID, so I know those are outside of that, but I look forward to hearing more as you all move forward.
Thank you very much, Karen.
Thank you.
That was very helpful. I don't know if Kurt's here mainly answered questions, or if he has comments he'd like to contribute at this time? You know, Kurt's been very involved. You can ask.
I'll be here to answer questions, Mayor, with Karen, as need be.
As understood, okay, good, thank you. I see Mayor Pro Tem Fortune has her hand raised up.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Um, I, there's stuff in here that I like, but there remain a lot of unanswered questions, and since the, our council just got this briefing within the hour, I was wondering if we could just submit our questions to Roy and have him get them all answered, as, as I am fond of saying, as others are fond of saying, the devil's in the details, and I, I do have a lot of detailed questions or issues that I'd, I'd like to answer, but I don't know if tonight is the best time to do that, I'd rather put some thought into it, I think.
Okay. Counselor Wolf? But you're muted, Julie. Julie, you're muted.
Okay. When did this packet get sent to Manitou?
I think.
Karen or Kurt?
Sorry.
Sorry.
Yes.
I want to know when they sent it to us.
We provided the information last Friday after our meeting, and then I followed up with our presentation, full presentation information on Tuesday, and sent that to all the owners, along with Manitou, for review and comment and feedback, and I'd be happy to forward that email to you if you'd like.
So just to clarify, then, you provided this specific eight-slide PowerPoint to Manitou on Tuesday?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Other council members, Mayor Pro Tem Fortune had mentioned the idea of submitting emails. I was going to ask for response on that. I was going to ask for response on that. Counselor Chandler, I see you had your hand up. You're muted. Judith, you're muted. Great.
Thank you. I would just like to know when the press release was written, who was involved in writing that press release and when it was decided that that was going to be released.
We worked with your folks in your communications, my communications team worked with your communications team. We put our information together and Manitou put their information together and then it was blessed by your, your folks as well as ours.
Which folks was that blessed by?
Is it Denise, can you answer your communications person's name? I'm sorry. Vanessa handled it from my end.
Yes, Alex was putting it together, Roy, Dole and I looked at it and I'm the one who said it's okay. So it's me.
And I'm sorry, I, I'm still unclear as to when that was all put together and when it was set out, sent out.
Last minute yesterday, all day yesterday. I don't know what time it was sent out because I did not send it.
Okay, but it was yesterday.
Yes. It was late that evening in terms of getting that out to the media.
I have many other questions and concerns, but I will reserve all of my questions and concerns for an executive session.
Okay. Counselor, Counselor Chandler, I was going to ask you, how do you feel about submitting questions as emails to, to Roy to let him sort that out?
I, I'll, I'll discuss that with you after this meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. Do we have other comments from council members? Counselor Wolf?
Thank you. This is a question for Karen. Karen, did you attend any meetings prior to today with any Manitou staff? And if so, can you tell us when and who?
Yes, we had several meetings last week each day. Most of us were all in attendance, including Kurt and I and my team and Denise and Roy and Dole from your team.
And as part of your proposal, if we decide that we're going to resume using the shuttle this summer, who do you suggest should pay for it?
Well, currently the contract that you all have is with our transit services and so that is funded right now. I believe you're paying for the incline and Denise, correct me if I'm wrong, but the incline shuttle is being paid by the bar lot funds and the City of Colorado Springs supports additionally your, I think it's thirty, the thirty-three one as well. So Kurt, you've got all that info. You want to, I'm sorry, I don't have all that off the top of my head.
The bar lot funds do not cover the entire shuttle.
Right, but incline, it covers the incline shuttle. It doesn't cover all of your shuttles.
No, it does not cover the entire incline shuttle of our costs.
Sure, Route 33 is the route that takes, that goes from Hiawatha up through Manitou, on Manitou Boulevard to Ruxton and then on to the incline. The cost for that, and I'm looking for that right now. My apologies. Is, I still haven't found the right one. Give me just a second. I apologize. Of that, Route 33 runs from six, which is the one going to the incline, runs from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, January through April, April and October through December. The city absorbs $160,000 of that cost and the City of Manitou absorbs $204,000 of that cost, I believe is the right number.
So did I hear this right? January through April, October through December? So there's, what about the summer?
Yeah, and then the summer months and the summer months as the contract's written is what is the cost absorbed by the City of Manitou.
But what is the cost for the summer months? Do you know that? I don't.
Yeah, two, two hundred and four, I believe it's $204,000. I still haven't put my finger on that.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood. I thought you meant 204,000 was how much Manitou pays for the January through April and the October through December.
Oh, no, sorry. The City of Colorado Springs pays for the shoulder months, I guess you'd say, and that's $160,000, whereas the City of Manitou picks up the cost as per the contract for the summer months, May through September, I believe, and it's right at $204,000.
Thank you so much. And under your proposal, who should pay for the search and rescue?
Well, per the current management plan, that is something that is relegated to the City of Manitou.
How much do you think we spend on that? Do you have any information?
I, I don't know.
Okay, I don't either. I just thought I would ask you. And how did you folks come up with the proposal about the six times a week cleaning the porta potties? Can you tell me what formula you used or how that was arrived at?
Sure. Currently, we're doing it three times a week. And with the request that came through and we understood that was a concern, we went to six times a week. Our vendor indicated that Sunday's not a good day for them. They won't do it. So it would be Monday through Saturday.
And have you looked at any research or standards or event planning or anything with respect to how frequently porta potties should be cleaned depending on usage?
Yes. And actually, Mr. Chaney and Grebnek looked at that and I don't have those figures right in front of me, but I think Mr. Chaney does and indicated that the number of porta jones that we have currently up there meet and exceed based upon the numbers, what would be required.
I'm asking you about the cleaning because I've spent about an hour on the internet researching porta potty cleanliness. It was quite fascinating. And, and it talked about, and which kind of makes sense, it talked about the frequency of cleaning depends on the number of people using per hour. So did you, I understand your answer to mean that you did not rely on any of that research, you just decided to double from three to six times a week and see how that goes? Do I get that right?
Not exactly. It was input that we received from Mr. Chaney that research he did and we took it at face value that the doubling would actually be more than enough.
The doubling of the free, of the cleaning or the doubling of the porta potties?
Of the cleaning. Yeah, and we've got plenty of porta jones. There's six up there and based upon the numbers that we've got, even on the, you know, highest use days, that was, and Roy, correct me if I'm wrong on this, is plenty, actually more than enough than what would be needed.
Roy has his hand up.
Mr. Chaney, if you'd respond to that, please?
Yeah, so the, the only research we did was on actual, the number of porta potties. And based on the chart from the porta potty company, it was around six, I think, six to eight porta potties. So it does technically fall into that category. On the cleanliness, we did not have any charts. So basically, we wanted more cleaning of the porta potties and the max Colorado Springs would do would be six times a, a week.
Thank you.
There was no other, any research that we did or could find on that, with that, basically the cost would, my understanding would be prohibited and be to six times a week and they wouldn't do it on Sunday. So I don't recall any other discussion there.
Thank you. And I see Counselor Chandler has had her hand up for a bit. Counselor Chandler?
At the May 26th meeting, I specifically asked how much it costs to rescue someone from the incline and the information I got from Dole Grebnek was approximately $800 per rescue. In 2019, we rescued, we initiated 60 rescues at a cost of sixty times, that's $48,000 and that is not including the cost of taking the rescue personnel out of Manitou that we desperately need to serve our city. It typically, it's three responders will go up to any rescue. So I hope that addresses one of Julie Wolf's questions. So $48,000 as of 2019 for rescue.
Counselor Wolf?
And this is maybe like the million dollar question, but can you help me understand why it's so important to Colorado Springs to be in charge of the reservation rather than allowing Manitou to do that? It's my understanding that you folks really want to be in charge and you don't want us to be in charge and I have to, I can't, I need help understanding where you're coming from about why that's important to you folks.
Counselor Wolf, this is Karen Pallas. Yes, as an owner, it would be our responsibility for that. When we originally entered into agreements, and then again, this is way off COVID, that's why we're here. But when we originally entered into that, we were not the owners. It was a privately held property and a Forest Service property and a Colorado Springs Utilities property. And back in 16, we worked through an exchange and we acquired that property along with the bar trail property. And so as the owner, it makes sense that we're responsible for that. Well, you wouldn't want us to be responsible for your parking enterprise, right? So that's why.
Well, I wouldn't want you to be responsible for the reservation either.
Well, as we are the owner and that is our responsibility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing further.
I believe Mr. Bremer was next and then Mr. Shada. Mr. Bremer?
So this is for Karen or Kurt. What are your plans for post-COVID for the reservation system?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, our board and many of others in the community would, if we're going to do anything beyond COVID as it relates to the reservation system, that we would go through a public process. And that's typically how we handle any of those major changes like that. The Forest Service was willing to support this because of the COVID-19. And so therefore, if we were to continue on with any type of reservation system, we'd need to go through that public process.
Mr. Bremer?
So I guess, I'm not sure you answered my question. What are your plans to continue the reservation system after a public process?
I wouldn't know until we went through the public process. If it's effective and it's a good tool and it works and the community is supportive, we could absolutely consider that. But again, clearly from our board, they want to make sure that there's a process involved in that. We're very comfortable with it being as part of COVID.
Okay. Mr. Bremer, I think you follow one question to that.
So what are your intentions for the, for the reservation process?
I'm not sure I understand.
Assuming we go through a public process and it's approved and so on and so forth, are your intentions to continue the reservation process after COVID?
It depends on what the public process dictates.
Okay, I said, assuming we go through the process and it is approved, are your intentions to then continue the reservation process?
If that comes out of the public process, absolutely. Why wouldn't we? That's what we do. We take input, we move forward with our plans and work through with the community and we'd want the community's support for that effort. That would be critical. And I think you're hearing that already from the community in terms of the original proposal and then moving forward with the reservation system that's free right at this point until we go through a, a bigger process down the road. But I think we're already seeing some good support from the community around this and understanding that it's related to COVID and how that is important to make sure that Manitou residents stay safe and healthy and that we provide the best experience in terms of the conditions that we're currently in.
I believe Mr. Shada was next and then we'll do Counselor Chandler. Mr. Shada?
Yes, I think is, I guess I'm asking this question of the owners. How many parking places do you folks provide for the clients of the incline?
As a city, the City of Colorado Springs owns the bar lot, that is 40 spaces up there. And so currently, City of Manitou has the lease agreement and you all have the operational responsibilities around that currently under that lease agreement. And those funds that are raised from that are to go towards Manitou incline improvements, bar trail improvements and to help with congestion along Ruxton, which is why the shuttle has been able to be supported by some of those funds as well. But the City of Colorado Springs only parking lot we have is the bar trail lot.
Okay, so how many parking spaces are there?
There's 40 if I'm correct. Kurt, is that right?
I think it's right at forty.
Right around 40, 37, 40, somewhere in there.
Okay, so there are 40 parking spaces there and what would you estimate is how many incliners arrive per car?
It varies and then we have a lot of folks that walk up and we've had the great success from the shuttle over the last several years.
Okay, no, no, no. I'm, I, I'd like to be specific about, you're telling me that you own a parking lot that has 40 spaces and generally when you go through some kind of a conditional use, all right, planning departments usually attribute some kind of factor of how many people are arriving in the car and then our clients of the, of the attraction. So what would you, what would you say would be a fair number?
We usually use about 2.3, Kurt, is that what we've been using for the Garden of the Gods, about 2.3 per vehicle?
Okay, so let's just round it up to be two people for just easy math. So that's essentially, the parking lot can accommodate 80 clients of the incline. How long would you say it normally takes from your studies and your analysis of your property, people who would park their car in that 40 car spot, utilize the incline, come back down and then remove their car and make it available for somebody else?
I would refer you to our parking enterprise folks. They do all that data and collect all that information.
Okay, well, I, I guess I would, as, as a resident of Manitou Springs, I guess I would say that it's probably normally for probably most people, something about two hours, you know, maybe three, if you include kind of putting your shoes on and.
Oh, you mean.
Making up your water bottle and things like that, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't realize, I didn't think you were talking about the user themselves, but yes.
Okay, so a rough turnover rate in that parking lot is about what, four times a day?
Yeah, so maybe right around there, maybe three to four.
Okay, so let's say four times a day times 80 people, that's what, 240 people?
Did you say four times, John?
Well, I said. Well, I think we kind of computed that there were 80 people and then the turnover rate in the parking lot was four times a day. Is that not correct? So that's, I'm sorry, that's about 320 people, right?
Okay, I'm sorry, follow.
So I would say a fair calculation for the capacity of this, of this attraction would be 320 people a day. Okay? I think that's an unfair burden to put in our community of 200 and some thousand dollars for a shuttle. Okay? And so I, I think that's essentially the capacity and it would be my expectation that any reservation system would limit essentially the reservations to the incline to 320 people a day. That's essentially the parking allotment that you, the owners, are providing. Is that not true?
Yes, if we were to take back the parking lot from the lease agreement that's currently with the City of Manitou Springs and with our Colorado Springs Utilities, then that would be the only parking lot that's attributed to that area. Correct. However, when we entered into a master and management plan with you all, there was all, considered all the parking in terms of downtown Manitou. That was your responsibility in terms of coming up with your parking management. That was your responsibility in terms of coming up with your parking management. That was really Manitou's piece of it way back when. Again, I think we're getting way off on the COVID.
No, 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 we're not getting way off on it at all. No, we're not. Okay, Karen, I wrote the emergency order, okay? And the emergency order clearly, okay, says that the Manitou incline is a nuisance. You are not providing adequate parking, okay? And I want to go on the record, okay, that you're, the owners of the incline, have only provided three, have a capacity per day of three-hundred-and-twenty people. And the burden has been placed in our community for over two-hundred-thousand dollars of transportation, okay? And no contribution, none, zero for any other parking places. So we're talking about post-COVID, Karen.
Correct, and that's a very different story. And I'm happy to have that conversation.
Well, I'll put it this way. The conversation I think that this council needs to seriously consider is that we should be giving you thirty days' notice that we have a dispute with this intergovernmental agreement, okay? This is an undue burden to our community of two-hundred-thousand dollars in difficult economic times. And you are suggesting, you have just suggested that the parking in our downtown area, okay, which is primarily for our businesses, okay, should be utilized for your property.
No, sir, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that's what was entered into between the city.
Okay, and this is what I'm, this is what I'm suggesting, is that I am unhappy with that intergovernmental agreement, okay? I am very unhappy with that. That is not a burden. This project of the incline has become a burden to our community. It is a financial burden to our community. It is a parking burden to our community, okay? It is a congestion burden to our community, all right? And you are not contributing to the cost of a parking space other than what we just calculated was three-hundred-and-twenty people a day. And I am perfectly willing to allow the incline to reopen with the conditions of a, with a reservation system that is limited to three-hundred-and-twenty people. I just wanted to go on record with that.
Thank you, Mr. Shada.
Thank you.
Counselor Chandler? You're muted, Judith.
I want to make sure that we're on the same page. I've heard a couple people say trail. I've heard a couple people say attraction. I want to make sure that moving forward, we are all very clear that the Manitou incline is not a trail. It is not a trail. It's never been a trail. And it has been an attraction since day one, since a train was on it. So having said that, since we're focusing on COVID tonight, which was, I didn't know that because I only got my packet an hour and fifteen minutes before this meeting. I just want to let you know that as of the Fourth of June, Colorado, the state of Colorado has seen a five percent increase in COVID cases. We've had in, since the Fourth, one-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-seven new cases. This pandemic is by no means controlled. It will not be controlled. It's going to go through several phases. And I don't know if any of you listen to NPR, but there was a renowned researcher who said, "We must always be wearing masks." Masks do, please go to NPR and listen to this. So, you know, you're suggesting masks for the way down because, you know, it'd be kind of cool on Bar Trail. And my job is to keep the residents of Manitou safe, 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 safe. And that includes protecting them from the exhaust, from the cars that come up to look for a parking spot on Bar, at Bar parking lot. And so we have a lot to talk about. But first of all, the incline is an attraction, not a trail. And I fully support Counselor Shada's look at who bears the brunt of the cost of the incline being open. It is not Colorado Springs. And I will say that we are co-owners. We're co-owners of the incline because we own the entrance. So co-owners. And so as co-owners, we have to come up with a really good plan that also benefits Manitou as well as Colorado Springs. That's it.
Counselor Chandler, if it's okay, Mayor Graham, for me to ask a question, a follow-up question? Which part of the entrance are you talking about? Are you talking about the roadways? Are you talking about the city itself or are you talking about a particular parcel? I just want to be clear.
You know, I'm talking about that you cannot get on the incline without going through Manitou. And parking in, and you have to park in Manitou. And as a city council person, I'm sure that wherever you live, if you had a new attraction that attracted five-hundred cars a day chugging exhaust up and you happen to live in a canyon and you had, say, asthma, you might have some issues with that. And those are the issues that council deals with every day. So I know that we're talking about this under the veil of COVID, but I want to remove the veil of COVID and actually talk about long-term management of the incline. Because the COVID pandemic has given us a unique opportunity to manage this. But this is not the sole reason why we're at the table here today.
Well, that is the reason in terms of, while we're here because of the emergency declaration, but I'm happy to have further dialogue and conversations with you all moving forward beyond COVID as well. That's, you know, we're happy to do that. But in terms of the closure, that's why we're, that's why we're here. And that's why, what the intention was to be here this evening as a special workshop.
Mr. Shada, you got a question or a comment?
It's going to be my suggestion that this thing remain closed indefinitely because I do not see a seriousness out of the City of Colorado Springs to deal with its parking issues and with the impact on our community.
Thank you.
I hear all this process stuff, okay, and your process, all right? It is our community that this attraction is in, and it is a nuisance.
With regard to the fact that, as this was presented tonight as a, to address matters during the COVID-19 pandemic, this was presented clearly as an interim solution in the idea that a significant public process would be involved if this was to move into a longer term, you know, a sustainable solution. I guess my question is, one of the, one of the points that the Manitou Springs City staff made in their May twenty-sixth presentation was that the City of Manitou Springs, Colorado Springs and the Forest Service should, you know, immediately move towards, towards that long-term process to look at what needed to be done. I believe the NEPA issue comes up here. And Manitou had requested, our position is that we need to get on that immediately. My understanding is that Colorado Springs has different thoughts. So I guess, Karen, if you could address that.
Yeah, that'll have to, Mayor Graham, excuse me, that will have to be addressed by the Forest Service. They manage the NEPA process. That's not my process. But I do know that's a necessary requirement. As you look at the master and management plan from before, all of that was a pretty hefty lift in terms of bringing all of that work together. And I believe Council, excuse me, Mayor Proton Fortune was involved and can recall how, what a significant effort that was to put that plan in place. And so I would defer to Oscar on his timing for a NEPA process. Anything that should be involved, any funding from the City of Colorado Springs in terms of the planning and master planning efforts that would need to be placed in the queue and considered and gone through our public boards and our city council and mayor for that to move forward.
So when Manitou says that we need to get on this immediately, it sounds like the Colorado Springs take is that it'll move much, much more slowly. And while Manitou is interested in trying to comply with the Forest Service and those regulations, I don't see that Colorado Springs is necessarily quite as energetic in that regard.
It's, I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
Oh, good, no, you go ahead.
I thought you took a breath, I apologize. Mayor Graham, no. In terms of the processes and the stuff, again, I don't control the NEPA scenario. That is a Forest Service requirement. But in terms of budgeting for a master management plan, is that something the City of Manitou Springs has funding available for that? My understanding from Denise, there wasn't funding for that.
Well, I think we're just beginning to look at that now. So that is, I believe, correct that there isn't funding for that now. We don't know what it would cost. And I'm not sure that we know what all would be involved. Since you have some experience at it, I was, was actually kind of hoping you could provide a little more, more guidance.
Yeah, we did, I did reach out earlier today to the same consultant that the communities used the first go-around. And I wasn't here for that first go-around. I've just read all the, all the documents and seen all the work that everybody did to put those documents and plans in place. But it was, I believe it was over a hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars for that master and management plan originally. And then I don't have the details on what the NEPA process would cost that at this time, we'd have to defer to Oscar to understand what's involved in that process.
Do you have a sense of how long that might take? What would be a typical time?
Normally to go, I must say normally. I don't know that there's really a normal scenario. It just really varies in terms of the community and the community involvement. A good example is we have done NEPA processes for the Pike's Peak Summit House. And that was a pretty lengthy process. And we already had one on the books, but it took almost four years to put all and everything into place. We've done one recently as it relates to Gold Camp Road and being able to close those gates. And that was about a two-year process. So it really depends on the community, how supportive the community is and how, how much there's consensus and collaboration around the effort going forward. A very divided process is very difficult, extremely difficult. And I think some of your staff, I believe Denise, I mentioned she's gone through that NEPA process before and understands what's involved and how extensive that is. But, you know, it's something we could sit down with Oscar and find out the timing of that. The federal government has to line up their, their time and their capacity within their staff. But I defer that to Oscar to understand that better. But in terms of Colorado Springs right now, for us to be able to put anything forward, we're probably at the end of 2021, 2022, based on the current workload in terms of doing a whole master management plan. We've just finished two. We just had two successful ones approved today by our Parks Board and they were right around that eighteen-month time period. So it really depends on the community and how much consensus there is around a particular direction. And I think that's going to be key with this, is there was so much work that went into it originally. And hopefully, we can move past some of that because there's a lot of parts and pieces that have already been completed, right? In terms of when we first started this, we've done six-million dollars worth of improvements to the facility to get it into the best condition it's ever been in. And I think that's been an extremely big checkmark in terms of the current master management plan. I know you all have done a lot of work along Ruxton, which was part of that original plan as well. And so depending on what's all involved and what's required to converse with the community on and get their input on will depend on how long it actually takes. So there's no great science to it, unfortunately. It just depends on the consensus amongst the community as you move forward with those dialogues.
Thank you. So Counselor Shada and Counselor Bremner had their hands up about the same time.
Mayor Graham, I think I have my answers question, my question answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bremner?
So this NEPA process is because of the National Forest portion of the incline. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that portion is only the very top portion of the incline, the very, very last portion of the incline. Is that correct?
Yes.
So to my thinking, it's not going to be a very involved, long-drawn-out process for just the top portion of the incline. Because the incline is there. I mean, there's really nothing environmental to protect up there. To my thinking, it would just be a simple process to say, okay, here's what we have to do, get it done, whatever it costs, ten-thousand dollars. I don't know how much it's going to cost. It's not going to be significant. It's not going to be long drawn out, take a very long time.
Mayor Graham, is it okay for me to approach Counselor?
Yeah, Karen, go ahead and speak to that, Karen, if you would.
Thank you, Counselor Bremner. And I was remiss. You were part of that original plan as the original friends, incline friends president and know what that heavy lift was like before as well. And again, what, the process that's been discussed in terms of NEPA and the things required, we also intend on doing the Northern Trail as part of that. And so that process is part of that conversation and the studies that are required around that, as well as, I believe, the Forest Service has interest in evaluating Bar Trail and some of the issues and concerns around that. And so the goal would be to do that once with the community, you know, not only to put reservation plans and additional trail connections and reevaluate events and facilities along Bar Trail. That would go all as one package in one time going out to the community so that we could all save a whole lot of funds and time and energy and be able to do that collectively and in concert together.
Okay, Mr. Schroeder?
Yeah, thank you. To the best of my understanding, this is something we're going to have to chase down and better understand. But because the trail is on, a portion of, part of it's on Forest Service land, it's a continual trail. So the requirement typically from the Forest Service is you have to study the entire area because they look at it, even though it's not on property that's theirs, it's a continual connection that crosses over some additional property. And because we're touching Forest Service land, they require something more extensive than what, it does make sense that what Mr. Bremner said, hey, it's only the top third of the incline. No, based upon the direction or the guidelines that Forest Service has, you have to cover the entire trail section because they look at it as a linked continual stretch. But that's something we're going to have to verify.
Thank you.
If you would, please, yeah. Counselor, Counselor Chandler, did you have your hand up or was your question been answered?
My question hasn't been answered, but I will reserve it for executive session.
All right, thank you, thank you, okay. Are there any other comments or questions from council members? Okay, very good. Well, I think that was the point of tonight's exercise. So Karen and Kurt appreciate your attendance very much. I think this information was helpful. We will probably, I would not be surprised if we had some follow-on questions. So we do appreciate your participation. Counsel, as Mayor Proton Fortune had suggested, she will be sending some questions via email to Roy, I think, to divvy those out. I think any of us could do the same. I'm sure Mr. Chaney would be happy to handle those. If there's no other business, then I think we could, we could conclude with this item. Any last comments from council?
One last comment. I'd like to, I'd like to set an executive session as soon as possible to discuss the incline issues.
Okay. Counselor Wolf? You're muted.
I'd like to propose that we put this on the agenda for the next work session. I am not willing to do it on a Saturday or any other day. I do not see it as an emergency. I do not agree to go into the building. And I'm happy to do this during work session. We could start right at 6:00 PM.
But this, of course, would be an executive session.
Correct.
Is that correct, yeah? Okay, but you would say move it to a work session, to a time reserved for a work session. Mayor Proton Fortune?
I would like to propose
I would like to propose that if at all possible, and if we're allowed to do this in a work session or in an executive session, that we do it no later than Tuesday night. And I would like that because Jeff will be in attendance, and I think we need our city attorney to be present.
It's a good point, seems to be.
And I would also like as many people as possible to do it, and I understand if people are uncomfortable coming into City Hall, but I would feel very comfortable in coming into City Hall with proper social distancing and precautions implemented for it.
Okay. Counselor Wolf?
And I would like to propose that Nancy Fortune is not the boss, and she is not going to decide if we don't want to come, you don't have to come. The question is, we all have the legal right to participate, and we will all be given the legal right to participate regardless of where it will be.
I just want to say, Julie, that I was not directing anything. I was providing my input as one of seven. I think we can come in, those of us who want can come into City Hall. The rest, if people are uncomfortable coming into City Hall, they can Zoom. So I'm not, if you are perceiving that I'm being the boss, I am not being, I clearly understand I am one of seven.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Chandler?
Just point of clarification. So am I hearing everyone saying that the next work session will be exclusively an executive session starting at 6:00? Did I hear that? Or?
I was proposing an executive session after next Tuesday, since Jeff will be there.
Okay.
So late. That's going to be a very late night. The reason I thought it might be helpful to do it at a work session is we can start right up at 6:00 PM. If we're going to have this start at 9:00 PM.
It would be tricky.
Y'all better drink a lot of coffee. I don't think that's a good idea. I would rather it be in a work session so that we can start right at 6:00 because we already have an agenda for Tuesday, I would imagine. If we can scrap the agenda on Tuesday and it's nothing urgent, I'd be all in favor of it. I'm not in favor of starting executive session with our city attorney who has to drive all the way back, you know, up to Denver, Boulder, you know, at midnight. I'm not, I don't see this as an emergency. I don't want to stay up until 9:00, 10:00, 11:00, 12:00 o'clock at night to do this. I would rather it be right at 6:00 PM, and if we can't do that next Tuesday because it's a meeting, then I propose we do it at the following Tuesday at a work session.
Okay, let me ask this. Suppose we looked at doing it Monday night, start at 6:00, had an executive session?
I oppose to doing it anything other than Tuesday night because we already have plenty of things to do. This is not an emergency. This is Karen's emergency, but it's not my emergency. And there's no reason we can't do this on a Tuesday night. You personally said that people who are employed should be encouraged to join City Council. I am full-time employed, and I have joined City Council, and you keep scheduling these meetings. I object. This is not an emergency. This should be on a Tuesday night.
This is the only meeting we've had that was not, has not been on a Tuesday night, and we've been trying to get this matter resolved, make some progress on it. Counselor Chandler?
Many of our liaison commitments happen to be on Monday nights, starting at 6:00 PM, so I would just throw that out as an idea. I'm not opposed to meeting at another time that's convenient. However, I do, I do really echo Counselor Wolf's concerns about leaving this till the very end. I think this is an incredibly important issue. I do, I believe that it deserves a work session. I believe that we should commit a work session to it. There's lots of moving parts here, lots of issues. I have a number of issues just on, say, the press release, those kinds of things. I want some answers. And I think that those are best served in an executive session, and I do believe that a nice fresh start at 6:00 on a work session evening would be, would be great. But I am not totally opposed to that being on an evening other than Tuesday.
Okay. If it were possible to basically take the agenda items for next Tuesday and move them out to a future meeting, would counsel entertain the idea of discussing this next Tuesday at 6:00? It'd be an executive session? Okay.
That'd be great.
Okay, okay. Can I just, I mean, obviously, we're not taking formal action tonight, but I would like to get a, kind of read the temperature. Okay, so the thought would be to discuss this next Tuesday in executive session starting at 6:00?
Oh, but may I ask a clarification question before we weigh in?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
So are you suggesting that we're an executive session, let's say, from 6:00 to 9:00, and then we begin the meeting at 9:00? Or are you suggesting that that'll be the only agenda?
What I'm suggesting is if we could move the other agenda items off to another week, that we devote the entire evening to the incline and this management plan, and hopefully, if we start at 6:00, my thought is if we gave it three hours and hit it hard, I think that's about as far as, my idea is that we're productive for about three hours. I don't know if we get it done. Yeah, I would hope we would get it advanced pretty far next Tuesday. That would be my thought if we did that. So does that kind of clarify the situation?
Yes, thank you very much. I understand now.
Okay, and then let me, maybe real quickly, I'm going to ask Denise for a quick, real quick thought. You're more familiar with the agenda for next Tuesday than I am. I apologize for not knowing that. Denise, is there anything really critical next Tuesday that you can recall?
When looking at it, there's a couple of appointments. There's the moratorium for short-term rental. A resolution for Bike Month. And the historical, and then hours of operation for medical marijuana. So you probably get most of the work done fairly quickly, I would guess, except for the... So, yeah, those are the items.
Well, can I interject as well? Because we do have a hearing scheduled, so that means it was published. And that was for the vacation rentals. And then we also have some items on the consented, consent calendar that probably have some timeliness to them, but we could, I mean, that's a consent agenda, so if it just gets approved, you know, five minutes, that's reasonable.
Okay, counsel conceivably, then, I mean, if we tried to get those several items taken care of in a half an hour and then move into executive session as quickly as possible, 6:00, 6:30? Does that seem reasonable? Okay, I guess, that seems, okay, let's just raise your hand if that seems like it would be a reasonable approach. Counselor, okay, and of course, Counselor Woolbrook is driving, so.
That's okay. I'm okay with that, John. Thank you.
You're okay with that? Okay, so the plan then would be that we would, we would meet at 6:00. We would try to, we would have a much abbreviated agenda from what we have right at the moment. So we try to take care of just a few things, get it done in half an hour. We do have that hearing. The resolution won't take long. I mean, it's a bicycle month resolution. There's no controversy there. And then we could move in as quickly as possible into executive session, and that would give us most of the evening. I think that would allow us to get to this quickly. I think there's strong interest in doing that. So if that's agreeable to the council, I would, I think that's the action we should take. Okay, I see nods and approval out there, so that will be our course of action. Okay. Do we have anything else related to this that anyone wants to bring up? Counselor Wolf?
I just want to thank Karen and Kurt for coming tonight. I know we don't agree on a lot of things, but I do appreciate your professionalism and your willingness to come speak with us and your clarity and well-organized presentations. And I also appreciate that you got your packet to us 48 hours in advance, so thank you both very much. I mean, we didn't get it 48 hours in advance, but somebody in Manitou apparently did. But anyway, so thank you both.
Well, I just, Mayor Graham, if it's acceptable, could I just say thank you again to to the council for the opportunity this evening. I look forward to answering any follow-up questions that you have, and thank you for for your time and feedback. And if there's anything else that you need from myself, don't hesitate to reach out. Roy and Denise and they'll have our contact information, and I'd be happy to talk with you individually if that makes sense as well. So thank you very much, and I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time and assistance. Thank you both, Karen and Kurt. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So technically, as we have with every meeting, whether it's a regular meeting or a work session, we can discuss council correspondence. If anyone has anything in the last two days, you want to bring anything up? Mayor Pretend Fortune?
Yeah, and as with everything, I do try to share what I've been doing, and so this is my opportunity, my easiest opportunity to do that. First of all, I took up Chief Churchill's invitation to go and visit with the police today. I sat in on some of their training. It, I really enjoyed it and took a few minutes to just speak to them, and that was a good experience. Secondly, I have received several concerns from community members, and I've been remiss at not bringing this up previously, but looking for council statement on the current conditions in our country when it comes to the protests and so on. And I would certainly like for us to come up with a statement or something, and I don't know if someone on council might like to come up with something that we could all agree to. But I personally, that, if we could come up, if we as a council could speak with one voice and give some leadership to the community, I think that would be very appropriate. So I throw that out.
Okay. And I see a thumbs up, and I've seen a couple nods of the head, so I think it seems like the majority sentiment here is in favor of that.
So the question is, how do we do it? Because I think sooner rather than later is kind of important.
I think that this is season, I really think this is like a future agenda item. I think it requires a process, and the process is a deliberation. So I would like to recommend that if we're going to take on something like this, we do it by adding it to an agenda so that we can have full public process and we can deliberate.
I agree. Does someone on council want to come up with a draft that we can deliberate over?
I could take a cut at it. I'll volunteer to do it to a first draft, unless, less than breaking somebody's heart. I didn't see any hands go up there.
I'm happy to help you with that.
Okay. All righty, okay, so be it. Okay. All right, Counselor Chandler?
I just want to tell everybody that I had three and a half hours of an orthopedic appointment today, and I really want to jump in full bore and do everything I can, but my doctor has put me on some restrictions, and that's why I'm not jumping in and volunteering for all this stuff. So just please let me, just bear with me for whatever, how many times, they said it could be, takes up to six months for my foot to heal, and if not, surgery is indicated. So I just want to let you know that I'm not, I'm not volunteering for these, not, not volunteering for these things because I don't want to. It's just I have to, some other issues I have to take care of. That said, I had an awesome lunch with Police Chief Brian Churchill and two mental health counselors from Aspen Point, which we are very highly motivated about setting up a emergency mental health response team for our vulnerable population in Manitou with the idea that ultimately, sometime down the road, we might even have a brick-and-mortar office where we can refer clients to get mental health services. But right now, it looks like we're moving forward with that, and I'd like to give a shout out to Chief Churchill on that. Thank you so much. This is so needed in the community. And also, I would like to say that we will be talking about the quarry issue at the next OSAC meeting, so I will be bringing all of that information to you at the next available meeting when we have our next OSAC meeting. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? Okay, there being, Counselor Woolbrook, since you're online, did you have anything you wanted to add for council correspondence?
Thank you, Mayor, but no, I do not.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on and see if we have anything for, under the city administrators' reports. Mr. Chaney?
Yeah, I just want to make a statement that Colorado Springs' final PowerPoint was sent at 1:56 PM today, which is four hours and not 16 hours ago. Thank you. That's all I have.
Very good, good point. Yeah, I should probably add too that, you know, Mr. Chaney had a meeting scheduled with Karen earlier in the day to go over slides. I think that was first thing in the morning, so. Yeah, that was, that needs to be recognized. Good point. Counselor Wolf, did you have a comment?
My comment is, and I guess it's more of a recommendation, because I know we're not voting and making motions or anything this evening, I assume. But I would like to make a recommendation that staff refrain from any further conversations with Colorado Springs regarding the topic that was presented tonight, until we all have an opportunity to coalesce and discuss and share ideas next Tuesday, which is just a few days away during our executive session. I think that would possibly avoid some problems, even if no one intends to cause them. And I think we've made it clear tonight that we intend to deliberate seriously about all of this stuff, and we're, but I don't want to confuse things by having further press releases, emails, phone calls, meetings, Zooms, any of that. It's just my personal suggestion. I know I'm not allowed to direct staff.
Well, and I think that we would anticipate that some of us may have questions that would email to Mr. Chaney, and he might, in order to get the answer, have to contact, you know, either Karen or Kurt. So that would, that would be, would that, in the context of that, would you be okay with that, Counselor Wolf?
I don't think there's any problem with me, for me, if someone just has a question like, what do you mean by this, or or what have you. But in terms of proposals, settlement proposals, legal contract modifications, opinions, I think all of that should wait until we can deliberate together before it's presented. But if the question is something, you know, like, what's the width of your parking lot? Or show us more information, if you would, about blah, blah that you presented. But I don't think it's appropriate for us to be taking any positions or suggestions or recommendations until we're on the same page together as a group. And I would apply that to staff.
Okay, and I noticed Counselor, Mayor Pretend Fortune had her hand up, I think, probably on the subject.
Yeah, no, you answered my question. My concern was I had withheld my questions to, from the briefing tonight, because I, but I probably got 20 questions that I want to ask. And based on what I just heard, I will send them to Roy, and he can send them to Colorado Springs, whatever. I would like to hear staff's, if we are putting, no, I can go along with not having a lot of extra discussion other than get our questions answered.
Okay, does that, that seem reasonable? Okay, all right.
Really just a three-day moratorium if you don't count the weekend.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry. Counselor Chandler? You're muted. Judith, you're muted. Okay, now, well, we seem to have lost her.
Oh, no.
Okay.
Happens to me once a day. So I have a number of questions and concerns about the what has transpired since May 26th that may not be in the purview of Roy Chaney. I mean, there's, I have several questions, including the presentation that he, they weren't available to. So I'd like to know who I send those questions to. They're procedural questions. And perhaps, Mayor, would you want us to send those to you?
Or I had, I just have some, some real concerns and some of them revolve around when, when we got the packet, how late we got the packet, the press release that I, I don't know about you, but I was no part of. And some communication disconnects. So I have lots of questions, but I don't know who to field them all to.
Well, if, if you would like, if you want to send them to me, I will certainly take a look at them. We'll see how we can get them answered. Or, you know, it may be that, that this is a lesson learned and we want to do things differently in the future. I mean, that, that's just my shooting from the hip. But yeah, if you want to send those to me, then I'll take a look at them.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that.
My pleasure. Mr. Chaney, did, I think you were finished. Was anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, great. And thank you. I know you really worked hard on this. So I appreciate your efforts there. Denise? Denise, did you, Denise, okay, you didn't have anything. Okay, Counselor Wolf, I see you got your hand up.
Yes, may I ask if you, Mayor, would be willing to share any emails that you get from any of us council members, unless, I don't know if that's a violation of the open meeting law, but I would very much like to know what the questions are and what the answers are. I don't want to reinvent the wheel. Sometimes if I can just read someone else's questions, it just triggers another good thought for me. And so it really helps me. I'm a learn, a group learner that way. But I don't know if that would be problematic. I would guess the questions can be sent to all of us. I don't know if the answers can be sent to all of us or not. Do you have any insight on that, since Jeff's not with us tonight?
Let me, one quick comment. I, and I will, I will defer to the city clerk on this too, but I was thinking, maybe if, if there are answers, I could just print them out and bring them to the meeting next Tuesday and give everybody a copy at the same time. And then I think we would be, we wouldn't have to worry about violations of the, of the Open Meetings Act.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Would that, would that work?
Yeah, that would be helpful. So I can learn from other people's questions and your answers. That would be great.
Okay. Judy, with that.
That's advisable, because that way everybody's hearing the answers at the same time. It's.
At the same time.
I just.
Executive session.
Okay, Counselor Woolbrook?
I just thought that if we shared questions without deliberating them, that that might be helpful. And I didn't think that violated the sunshine law. It's when you start to have discussions with three or more, that, and you start going back and forth, that you're in violation. But if you already see that one council member's asked 20 of your 25 questions, then it just seems like, I, I just, unless I'm wrong about that, and I believe Judy Morgan would be tonight's expert on that, it's hard to resist the reply all or reply. But getting a list of questions and knowing what each other's questions are, if we're not deliberating them, in my reading of the law, is not a violation of the sunshine law.
So challenge you would have is if there's some sort of a direction or like a implied decision or something where it's, it's very clear that somebody's coming to a decision on something or kind of directing everyone to think a certain way that could be considered like deliberation or, or you just have to be careful that those, those actions are done in, according to the law. So if it's, when you're, if you're going into executive session to get legal, a legal opinion, those are, you know, questions you ask. And then, and then, as you know, the attorney gives you answers. So I don't see where those, if there was a comment made about hearing those questions and answers in executive session. And unless they're executive session topics with answers from your attorney, I think those questions and answers probably would be better discussed in open session, unless it has to do with negotiation, that sort of thing. So there's, it has to qualify under the executive session to then have that conversation in executive session. But we have to.
Good. Counselor Wolf?
So Judy, thank you, Judy. So that would be like personnel issues, legal advice, those two things. Any questions, any of the questions going along, personnel concerns, legal advice concerns, that would move into the executive session?
So there's seven things that, that it could fall under. So we would just need to make sure that we go ahead and create the agenda item to cover those items that will be potentially discussed in that executive session. So if it's personnel, if it's legal opinion, and if it's like negotiations or something along those lines, we would need to agendize it such. And then that could be discussed in executive session.
Counselor Wolf?
So does that, do you need that information in time for tomorrow's packet?
I would need, yeah.
Agenda?
I guess what we, what I'm asking then is, is can we assume that those are the, the areas that we want to make sure we cover when we do our agenda item wording?
I would, I would suggest personnel and legal advice. Those are the only agenda items that I personally can imagine coming up. I just want to make sure we give proper notice in your, you know, agenda announcement and such. So I, I'd like to hear from other people, but those, I'm trying to think broadly. Those are the only two issues I can think of, is there may be some personnel issue questions? I believe there are. And also some questions for legal questions pertaining to the incline.
I think three, Judy, what I'm hearing is the, the legal or the incline and negotiations, personnel, and then also incline enforcement. And that would need to go under there. So we can ask Jeff for the verbiage of those three things.
Okay. And when it comes to personnel issues, if it's about a specific person, not a generic umbrella, then you do have to, you know, there's notice, notifications, requirements and things like that as well. So I guess, Mayor, if you have some insight tomorrow, when we're getting that agenda item set up, I appreciate your feedback.
And I would work with Joe, so it's all done.
Okay. All right. I think we can make the world go forward, I hope. Okay. And Denise, I believe you, you didn't have anything else. Is that correct, Denise? Denise, okay. All right. Well, I think we've covered everything. Unless there's anything else, I would say that we should adjourn and call it a night.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night. Thanks. This is extra, extra duty. So I appreciate your efforts. Thank you. Good night.